Here we go.
Would you all say, what do you think of the youth leadership class? Wow. Thank you for being here. Glad you're here. Glad. Mr. Byrd.
I had to rethink.
Thank you. So we have fifteen here with sixteen breathes, so we got four. Our part of our chaplain's not here. I'll ask Michael Fagan to lead us in our prayer and the second solace and we'll leave it in our place for later.
Mr. Byrd. Thank you, Dr. Draper. We thank you for being here and we thank you for this beautiful product country living in our Lord and we thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Jefferson County. We thank you for the blessings you've given us and pray that we'll always be thankful and you do the honor of glory for all of you. Pray, Lord, that as we conduct business this evening, we'll do so in America pleasing you.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item is approval of the two. That motion for your solace, Mr. Bales, the amendment for judgment to the two. Senator will request to speak. Mr. Draper.
Just real brief comment. Department heads and elected officials are all on the agenda. As I'm sure all of you know, there'd be a proposal coming up at the budget committee section or the budget minutes section for a county employee pay increase. You're on the agenda. If you want to address that, please do so with a space leave if you're experiencing hiring issues or having staffing issues or anything. Just hurry to speak up if you feel so compelled.
No other requests to speak. All favor approving the agenda. Please vote yes. Passes. First item is election of officers. First officer to be elected is chairman. We proceed. I nominate Mr. Martin Cox for chairman.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor, vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Passes. Next one is Chairman Prothea. Ms. Stupak.
Todd Casterson.
Second.
Other nominations. You may proceed to vote. All in favor of yes, opposed, no. Passes sixteen. Chaplain. Can you help me?
Michael Fagan.
Michael Fagan has nominated for chaplain.
I'll second that.
Motion second to the other nominations for chaplain. Green and all in favor of vote yes, opposed, no. It passes. I guess that's a premonition you're doing in prayer. Yeah, I'm a clairvoyant, yeah. Parliamentarian. Ms. Stupak.
John Neil Scarlett.
Second.
Mr. Scarlett, motion second. Other nominations. Green and all proceed to vote. All in favor of vote yes, opposed, vote no. Passes fourteen to one. Next item, approval of amendments, regularly, regularly, quarterly voting session. You want to take all three of them as a whole?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright. So we have a motion by Mr. Byrd, second by Mr. Fagan. Any corrections or amendments to the amendments as we proceed? If not, all in favor of approval, vote yes, opposed, no. Passes sixteen. Next item is appearance of citizens. I'd like to recognize former Commissioner Randy Backsley. We're glad that you're with us tonight and you'll not get paid tonight.
It wasn't much, whatever I did.
No particular order, just the way I picked them up, so don't read anything into anything. So Jennifer Montgomery, you'll come to this podium. Somebody make sure the green light is, it's not. There you go. Thank you. Please give us your name and address.
I'm Jennifer Montgomery, 2255 Charlie Hodges Road. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and an organized group of my neighbors in Strawberry Plains. We are growing increasingly concerned about inappropriate and inadequate land use planning in Jefferson County. We are especially concerned by the recent proposal by the Regional Planning Commission to create a new agricultural zone. In August, this commission voted against a zoning change from an agriculturally zoned parcel to an industrial zoning on Highway 11E in Strawberry Plains. The purpose for the zoning request was to accommodate a slaughterhouse. Many of the surrounding property owners, agricultural and residential, are opposed to this slaughterhouse. Our fear is that the proposed agricultural zone, which includes provisions for an expanded slaughterhouse, slaughterhouse use, sorry, is a strategy to accommodate the interest of the slaughterhouse investors who might oppose it, might propose it for the land that by the decision of this county commission has already been deemed inappropriate for industrial use. This new zone will impact the entire county. We are concerned that it will be haphazardly created and more in the interest of a group of investors than in the service of public good. We are also concerned that as new people move to our county, most recently at an astonishing rate, land use planning in Jefferson County will be insufficient to meet the demands of these new citizens, while protecting the integrity of the communities that Jefferson County residents have built and in which they continue to invest. I'm here to ask you to please call for an updated comprehensive plan, including well-defined planning procedures and sufficient education in Jefferson County. Such a plan might be developed in the context of a fair and equitable process in which consensus might be built and the public better served in Jefferson County. I'm also asking that you please not vote in favor of zoning changes that support uses that, like the slaughterhouse, whatever the zoning, drastically intensify the land use of the surrounding area until such a plan can be developed in the interest of Jefferson County citizens. A comprehensive plan would at the minimum include the following: an opportunity to generate community-based vision and goals, an inventory of community strengths and opportunities, analysis of future trends and considerations, future land use map and voting map, and action-based strategies and investment tools to accomplish community goals. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Sharon House.
Hi, I'm Sharon House. My address is 2139 West Highway 11E in Strawberry Plains. You know, I just want to talk about something. I apologize that I've not become more involved in my government before now, but now that I am waking up to its importance, I have questions. That's mainly what I'm, why I'm here tonight is to learn more. While I was looking at the agenda, I noticed that several committees have members that have served multiple terms. So I'm sure that there's a reason for this, but it seems like, like happens at my church, once you get on a committee, it's like an appointment because they go on and on and on. So of course, we appreciate the service of these people, and I know it's a big job, but with all of the changes that we're facing in our county, I'm just really concerned that I want to know how these selections are made. The factors that, you know, do we have like a job description for each committee that to be on this committee, you would have to have a background of whatever? I just, I'm curious. I feel like I need to know these things. I think that Jefferson County is very diverse and that we have a lot of citizens with multiple talents in many different fields. And my hope is that we'll be able to utilize different citizens to help with the progression of our county. And at this point in time, an example, because it's dear and dear to my heart, is our zoning and planning committee. We are being challenged with so many changes due to our growth that just keeps increasing and increasing. And I'm just wanting to know, what are the credentials to serve on your committees? And do your, not only the zoning and planning, but do other committees have a job description if you are or credentials and a skill set? My concern is that you're able to put the committee member in the correct committee that has the tools in their toolbox to accomplish the goals we need to accomplish. So basically, I don't have an opinion. I just have questions and anything you can do to help me understand would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. David Seals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Seals, Senate 30 Sam Martin Road in Dandridge District nine. Commenting on elected school directors. House Bill 1228 does not mandate elected school directors. It will give you, county commission, the opportunity to put that question of elected school directors to the citizens in a referendum. They get to choose, and in my opinion, those voters deserve to have that choice. Very high percentage of voters have in favor of elected school directors. Opposition to elected school directors comes from special interests and their lobbyists. They wish to hold the power they seized from the voters in 1992. From the governor's office and legislature for control of the Democrats. The Jefferson County Republican Party made a resolution supporting elected school directors on October 11. A copy of that resolution was provided to county commissioners. There's also a statewide effort to amend the law to authorize primary elections for school board seats. I'm working with other party chairmen across the state to facilitate the effort. I respectfully ask that you find favorable resolution 2144. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is approval of notaried bonds, and I take this part of the headed or wants to add a couple of names here.
Two applications that came in late, Rita Starr and Janet Rick Schrock.
So those will be added to the list that you have. A motion to approve notaried bonds would be in order. Mr. Scarlett, second. Byrd, in discussion, no request to speak. All in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. Pass sixteen zero. Next item is mayoral appointments. We can take these by whole or divide them up. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Take them by whole.
Motion by Mr. Solomon to approve all mayoral appointments. I have to say, neither. Hit your button, Mr. Solomon. Second. I'll say that I already voted. Is someone seconding?
I'll second.
Concerned you all have already voted, it would be.
Really?
He's on, he is the nominee.
Oh, okay.
That's pretty good, Louie Clarity. Passes fifteen zero. Next item is to extend the local coronavirus relief to our employees. This ended June 30th. This is to extend to our county employees through October the 31st. It's up to 10 days for quarantine or whether they had COVID-19. And this is for those who haven't already had it. We had another uptick in the COVID virus. We've had some employees that have used it, so a motion, Mr. Scarlett, second, by Mr. Solomon. No request to speak. Let me go ahead and vote. If you're in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. Passes sixteen zero. Mr. Poe, you want to address raises?
Yes, I do, sir. If you don't mind.
If you, are you for or against?
I am. I'm for what Mr. Draper proposed during the budget committee meeting, which, if I remember right, was five percent plus the county consumes the insurance cost. I'm not sure if it's appropriate or not, but I know that the meeting is televised or put on YouTube. We're on live right now. If that's not appropriate, you can meet me outside by the flagpole and this meeting's over. But there's about 60 to 100 people fluctuating that are interested in this meeting. So what I'd like to tell you all is, I appreciate your courage, whether you're for it or against it. I'm for it. I see the employer, you're serving circuit court. I get to tell you with no question that I've seen the employees and how they served and what they sacrificed throughout the pandemic. So you don't have to poll them individually. I can tell you on my behalf what I saw directly. I appreciate what you guys do. I appreciate your courage. I fully support, and everybody that I can vouch for that is on this live also supports that raise. So as you're voting tonight, let your heart guide you. Your county, the people that work here and live here are extremely invested in your vote and your decision, so greatly appreciate if you would consider it. And if not, I respect that, but I would ask that you come by the office and let my office ask you, what drove your heart to vote no, because they are interested. And I think you owe it to them and they owe it to you to be engaged in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poe. Mr. Harden.
I'll echo Mr. Poe's words on behalf of my employees. I would appreciate you benefiting them with the raise this year. The raise suggested by Mr. Draper appears fair to me. They've worked very hard during this COVID season. Other than a month, we were closed by mandate. They've been there every day and hadn't missed a beat, taking care of customers. We often take care of outside counties because they've had closures in their office, but would appreciate your consideration for an affirmative vote.
Mr. Tipton.
Kevin kindly took the words out of my mouth, but I'm just asking if you would consider that. The, my guy, it's hard to find people to work right now. Nobody wants to work. My guys water in the snow, the mud and rain, and you know, a lot of people, I got a letter from Nashville that says that road department is first responder. And a lot of people talking about fire trucks, EMS, sheriff, we cut on the pace to get to where they're going. And a lot of people don't realize that. And I'm just asking if you would consider this. If you don't, nobody's gonna be mad until we go outside. That would be all right. But seriously, if you would consider it. Thank you all.
Sheriff, copy. I think you got a budget.
Yeah, I would share the same thoughts as they did. I think in the last year with COVID and everything else that we faced, I mean, law enforcement's been demonizing the press for the last year and a half anymore. If you were telling me, you know, five years ago that, you know, we had a deputy walk in the wild and get spit on for wiring this uniform. And, I mean, you know, something that happened 980 miles from here and we got demonized and it's affecting us as far as, I think in first responders, first responders in general, you can't get nobody. I lost the eighth one that I made slots short. The private sector is raising salaries to where, you know, our people are out there working, they don't open up anymore. I mean, since COVID, I mean, we don't understand it. I talked to other sheriffs, our violent crimes went up 100%. Everybody assaults in the last year. We don't, I mean, don't understand it for COVID. I mean, if you watch YouTube football, you ought to understand it. Right there at the end of the game, I mean, you know, I got a phone call to do that surprise. I said, no. I said, people don't have problems anymore. I said, they can't even go, you know, people don't even go out and have demonstrations anymore or protest. The first thing they want to do is start throwing rocks and being destructive. But the men and women who work at the sheriff's department have done an outstanding job and I think this will go a long way in helping the community or putting us in a position where we can start retaining some people, and I really appreciate your support and your direction.
Thanks, Sheriff. Mr. Gao, back here. There you go.
Obviously, I'm for it. I just like to give a couple of facts. Retention's been a hard thing for us. At the rate of pay that I, you know, got to hire drivers, paying those McDonald's, current McDonald's offering $13 on their board, and I'm hiring drivers cheaper than that, trying to. This raise would put about six of my guys, we got about 35 people, six of my guys would achieve $10 an hour at this rate, and they would greatly appreciate it.
I'm gonna put you on the spot in a good way, kind of, but commissioners, I'm sure y'all know the convenience center in Chestnut Hill, one of them had to be moved because it was in the right of way to new 411. They had worked the bush on the new location, and because it's in my district and I had an interest in it, I kind of kept pads on. I don't want to misquote any numbers, but you correct me and tell us right now. It's my understanding that you went out for bid for site work and it was way more than anticipated. You rented the equipment and your guys and you, and I actually saw him on heavy equipment, but you guys did the work in the house and saved the county. How much were you?
I mean, the dirt work alone, the cheapest bid was $69,000, and we rented the equipment and used our labor, just right up to $20,000. Just on, that's just on the dirt work alone. We did all the grade works, did all the gravel, did all the concrete work ourselves in the house, the building.
I suspect there's a lot of that goes on in other departments of what we save in county money. We just don't always hear. I just have to know about that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dr. Johnson, do you want to speak on the county blowers getting ready?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. Is Justin here? There he is. When y'all get behind the pole, it's.
That is perfect.
Yeah, I know.
So, yeah, same thoughts as my counterparts. 911's the gateway for the public to reach the government. Let's face it, we're there 24/7. Our calls have increased. Our staff has to be there and answering those phone calls. They've done a heck of a job, even through our staff having COVID, overtime is out the roof, and to be quite honest, my staff is tired. They're absolutely exhausted. So this tough kind of appreciation would be greatly beneficial for retention and that and other, we appreciate what that is. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips.
I was quickly giving you an update on EMS, obviously. Our men and women, as well as all the county employees, are working very hard, very tired, given the call volume that they face each and every day. Retention is a big issue for us. It's a nationwide problem. If you Google EMS shortages, it's nationwide and it's hitting us, it's hitting us hard. It's never been a problem here before. Jefferson County has always supported their EMS system. We appreciate that. Employees appreciate everything that you've done for us. We continue to look for your support in these raises as well to help us retain those that we do have. We are losing them to other professions just because they are, they're wore out. And they don't often get the respect that they deserve on the calls, so any support that you could show them in this place would be greatly appreciated. Just to give you an update, as soon as we get three slots filled, two or three leave for another profession, so right now, we're currently down four or four-time positions, and that's not including those that you all set aside to expand. We were at the point to start that expansion and we lost, we lost three employees by their choice to other professions. They just let the profession work. So that's kind of what we're facing today. So anything you can do to help us would be great.
Mr. Tipton.
I got one thing I want to throw in. I've got my guys carry a phone. We got a phone, 911, kind of 24/7 every day of the week, of the year. They never get compensated until the phone rings and they carry it for a week. And they volunteered to do this. Not many people do that. They're dedicated. I've done it for years myself. And they, these guys, I tell them, when it snows, you don't have to call. They're sitting in the parking lot ready to go.
Thank you. Mr. Fox, finance office.
Thank you. On behalf of myself and county commission, we appreciate everything that all our county employees do. Environmental circumstances, some of them have to work through long hours from COVID and the challenges of working with the public. They don't work with the public that you don't know, but we certainly appreciate our employees. Financial reports have been given by the financial director. If you have any questions for the financial director, there's no approval on this. Just proceed for your information.
Okay, now we have resolutions for approval. Surplus for danger tribery, resolution 21-39. Motion by Mr. Solomon, second by Mr. Bales. No request to speak. All in favor of yes, opposed, vote no. Passes sixteen zero. Next item, resolution 21-40, resolution to declare a surplus and authorize the facilities department of Jefferson County to dispose of said equipment. Motion by Mr. Solomon, second by Mr. Bales. No request to speak. All in favor of vote yes, opposed, vote no. Passes sixteen zero. Resolution 2021-42, resolution to declare a surplus and authorize the sheriff's department of Jefferson County to dispose of said equipment. Motion by Mr. Reed, second by Mr. Bales. No request to speak. All in favor of vote yes, opposed, vote no. Passes sixteen zero. Resolution 2021-43, resolution to declare a surplus and authorize the trustees office of Jefferson County to dispose of said equipment. Motion by Mr. Blevins, second by Mr. Bird. No request to speak. All in favor of vote yes, opposed, vote no. Passes 16-0. Resolution 2021-45. A resolution to declare a surplus and authorize the circuit court of Jefferson County to dispose of said equipment. Motion by Mr. Sales, second by Mr. Reed. No request to speak, all in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Passes 16-0. One item under item D there, surplus of Jefferson County schools. It says information only. In your original packet, there was a letter. And this letter was for you to take action to dominate that school bus, they declared surplus to the Jefferson County Rescue Squad. A motion to. Yeah, I'll make a motion and say this is a request surplus bus 58 and consider donating to the rescue squad. They have to give it to county commission. We have to do the donation. Frank, keep working on it. Motion, second. All in favor, yes, passes. Let me make a note under item H, and she's not here, but we need to have her at our next meeting. Sherry Montgomery has retired at the House Department, and she has served Jefferson County well. And she was in the thick of it during COVID-19. And we already addressed it. We will, we will have her in here and recognize her for what she has done during this crisis. Health Department brings it down to budget committee, county amendments. Mr. Chairman of, Chair of County of Budget, can we lump funds together like everything under 101?
We can except for the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Which the sheriff's department. We passed it with no recommendation, but we were running short on time and somebody was pushing us.
Yeah, they still pushing us, which three?
But we did not, uh, supply a recommendation. It is, so it should be taken out. But all 101, though, with the exception of the sheriff's request, can do what you have.
What number is the sheriff's?
Uh, number five is the sheriff's. I checked on the beds.
So Mr. Sales makes a motion and Mr. Bird is seconding it. And this will be amendments to fund 101. All of them except for number five. No request to speak, all in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Passes 16-0. Next item is a general fund 101 amendment number five for the sheriff's department. Budget committee, have any comments?
Oh, the budget committee just didn't, they didn't provide a recommendation. They just didn't take this up. The sheriff may want to speak to this.
Sheriff Coffee, you want to? Explain this budget amendment.
Yeah, if it goes to the tactical beds for our special operations team, we've used grants to supply 50% of the beds for everybody at the sheriff's office in the last couple of years. These, the Department of Justice grants will not allow you to purchase tactical beds in, on, on the grant. Some of the beds we had, I mean, that was one of the partners was restoring those. So these also have trauma, rock effects in that we didn't have in the other beds. And they're able to stop actual rock, and it was a good shot of the rock. And we could just ask for the utilities for that.
You have two items under this budget. Number two, that's out of the governor's grant to do those beds. Number one inside, you're moving funds on part-time personnel in your garden.
Is that a? They're all the same. Yeah. Our part-time, we don't use our part-time budget as much because it's hard just to, it's hard to fill positions full-time. So I looked at the part-time budget. We had some leftovers from last year. We want to take our bottom startup pay and increase it for the job to put us more competitive with other surrounding departments. I know some of the most surrounding departments just this year have boosted theirs up to where we're still, we're still got some work to do with that. But I mean, this will be a start. I submitted that proposal to the finance director of what those raises will be. And I think it affects 22, 22 employees that was at the base startup pay. The base startup pay was $26,617. So this brings it up to 28, I'm not for sure, 28.52% or $52 or something like that. Not for sure.
Questions for the sheriff? We have a motion and a second to approve from Mr. Sales, second by Mr. Bird. No request to speak, all in favor of both yes, opposed vote no.
Mr. Chairman, does, does everybody understand that when they voted for that block, or does everybody understand you voted for the raises in there?
Well, I guess I need to abstain then.
Yeah. Thank you for making the motion.
Post actionist abstain, okay.
Better go back.
Probably need to go back. Did you make, did you make the motion?
I did.
Yeah, we need to take that one out.
Okay. Let us clear this one right here and we'll go back.
Yes.
101, number six.
Number six.
Number six.
Just take it out.
Pull it out, everything but number six and number five.
So yours passed. So I put this as the employee raises that Mr., this, uh, from the budget committee. And it's amendment six to fund 101. We have motion by Mr. Faden, second by Mr. Blevins, request to speak. Seeing none, all in favor, both yes. Sorry.
Mine's not working or something. Oh. I'd like to amend this by lowering it to 3% plus eating the insurance. And the reason being is, and I, I totally respect that, although we, also, we've also got to think about how to fix next year's budget and taxpayer. We gave 3% last year when a lot of counties didn't give raises and when a lot of counties were laying off. And I just feel like if we're indexing this thing out, the numbers may be skewed on what we're doing.
So what's your amendment?
My amendment is to lower the wage increase, the wage part, to 3% and still absorb the insurance cost, the full amount of insurance, which would end up over 4% total compensation.
We have a second to the amendment. Okay. On the original motion? Oh, on the amendment. Second by Mr. Carmichael. Have motion second on amendment for a 3% raise to also include in health. Big increase. No request to speak, now Mr. Doctor.
Just a few quick comments. There's not much I can say. Department of Education officials haven't said, but we'd like to remind everybody, I'm all a vote no, and I'm holding out for the tie percentage if this doesn't pass. But just like to remind everybody, I know we're in unique times. Federal government has announced that social security increase for 2022 is 5.9%. But that's, 5.9 is the biggest increase since 1982. If you look at the, at the news, you got John Deere employees over 10,000. None of them walked or rejected a 6% pay increase and went on strike. You got over 1,400 employees at Kellogg's on strike. If you just drive around locally, you can see some restaurants that drive by windows that don't have enough help to staff the dining rooms. And they're paying more already than some of our folks are. As far as funding, I, my, my general preference is market surveys. But I didn't ask for one because I think we're in a time right now, the market, the market is still redefining itself and it hasn't settled down yet. But as far as funding, when you look at a rollover, I just a quick few high level comments on rollover. Debt service 2.9 million. And I'm sure we'll get into a lot of discussions in January about how to spend this month. Debt service rollover is 2.9. Maybe we should use that to pay down debt. School rollover was 3.1 million. Maybe we should just say that goes back into school. The school board decides how to spend it. Highway department, 1 million. Maybe that just goes back to, and they pay more roads and do more things over roads. American or Cognac, not much to say on that three in high D, except we spent it the right way, hopefully, when we figure out when the government says how we can spend it. County general, 2.7 million. Large increase in property taxes, over a million dollars, I believe it was, a property tax collect, collected. That is, you would think sustainable unless the housing market crashes and values crash. 2.7 million, then I think we should spend about a third of this to give the county employees 5% raise. Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
I agree with a lot of statements that Commissioner Dockery is saying. And I want to thank the department heads for standing up for the people that work for you because if it was not the people in this county that work for us, then what else would we have? We owe our employees of this county to take a stance and say, right now is time to give them a decent raise. We've got the money on the books and we can plan for the future. But they deserve it. And my goodness, when you have a deputy making $26,000 a year and a client and wife on the line, when you have people at Circuit Court who work in on in, sometimes beyond what they're supposed to do. We've got employees who are dedicated and we should reward them. At 5.9% raise for social security for military retirees, I understand that. Our employees need it just as much as they do. Thank you.
Mr. Bales?
There's no doubt that the federal service deserved more period. But my question, if Mr. Fox has got to say, what's the difference from the 3% and the 5% approximately? Because I know it's actually ahead of time. And can we do that without a tax increase of 3 and or 4?
The, you know, a second here. The. 5% is 820,000 dollars approximately. So. 5% would be about 570. The question whether we can do this without a tax increase is yet to be seen. We did this quick calculation on the sales tax. That has to continue to grow this year at at least 10% for that number to pay for, to pay for a 5%. Right now it's up, I think I said 18%. I was supposed to have new numbers today, but Tennessee did not release their number yet. So about 570 for 5%, 820 for, if I did my math right here, for 5%.
You ate for five and. 570 to 3% and 820 to 5.
I'm sorry, 5 and 3 are 3, excuse me.
Mr. Bales, were you in favor or opposed to the amendment? Or do you still decide?
I think you got to remember them, because they've already said them.
No, I mean, when you spoke, were you speaking in favor of the amendment or against?
Hell, I was trying to get information before I made, made a decision. I just want to know if it could or couldn't.
All right. Just asking, Mr. Carmichael?
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Well, you know, really what I have is a comment for it because you've done, Langdon, you've done answered my questions. Randy, you've done asked them. But what scares me to death here is we're sitting on a pocketful of money right now. And that's a good thing. But nobody's got a crystal ball that says what next year's gonna be. Now, if everything takes a dip, the sales tax went crazy this year because of COVID money. Everybody cashed in checks and went out and spent them. I got no issue giving anybody pay rates, good pay rates. But what, what scares me about the whole thing, because you're gonna be over 6% is what you're gonna do, 820,000, give or take some change here. But what you got to think about is, okay, where's that gonna put you next year and the next year? Where's our budget gonna come in at? Okay, if I have to vote next cycle to balance the budget, we like 230 some odd thousand dollars, I believe it was. Langdon can correct me. To balance the budget this year, we took it out of the, we took it out of the regular money, our regular bank accounts. That's what we done. Okay, we borrowed that much money. Now, if we go ahead and spend 820, you add that up, your million dollars in the hole at the next budget. So when it comes next end of May, okay, you're gonna replace a million dollars before we're back at ground zero. So if I have to vote to raise taxes a nickel, 6 cents, okay, what'd that do to your raise? We gave you a raise today, but we can all applaud, we can all done something well. It's called inflation. But what happens is your numbers get inflated to the point that next year, can we maintain that? Okay, if we can't maintain that, if we raise your taxes, suddenly that, suddenly that 5% was like, oh, wow. Well, hey, you know, it's kind of like minimum wage. I'm making $15 an hour, but that's exactly what a cheeseburger costs. So, you know, it's, you know, I, I know what I'm saying is very unpopular. And we've got to take care of our employees and try to hold this thing together. But the point I'm just saying is, is that moderate upticks is easier to control than a budget than when you jump out here. Because when we jump out here, there's no getting back. It's not like it's a bonus. You know, I would be more supportive of taking, uh, taking the virus money and saying, hey, let's give everybody a bonus and let's see what next year does. But if we see a big downtick in everything next year, we're still riding that high of all that free money. Okay, when it, when it notices over and goes back, you know, I like how Langdon has always budgeted us because we've always erred to the conservative side where we understand, hey, we have two or three years in a row, hey, we, we can weather this. All I'm saying is be very careful because sometimes you can get somewhere that, you know, in, in 2010, 2012, this county had a lot of debt. Lot of debt. We, we couldn't parlay us. I can remember going into a budget cycle, we was $4 million in the hole before we even started the budget. And, you know, I'm saying, we got to be careful not to get back in that spot. Let's make sure that we don't have to lay employees off when other counties de-ize you. So I read you.
Thanks, sir. Seeing no other requests to speak, you're voting out the motion or the amendment to the motion for a raise of 3% which also includes in insurance increase. But yes, if you're in favor of the amendment, no, opposed. Amendment fails. We're back to the original motion, motion of 5% increase. Seeing no request to speak. You're in favor of both yes, you're opposed vote no. Your favor vote yes, your opposed vote no. Carries fourteen to one, one to the step. Next item, breaks us down to Fund One Sixteen, Item One and Two. Is it okay with the budget committee, you wanna do separate or together?
Well, you have to do the different funds, except you follow the funds.
Certainly. Santation Fund One Sixteen, amendment, amendment number one. Tired from the budget, may designate a second, but we'll probably have to have it on the No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no. Santation Fund One Sixteen, amendment number two. Recommendation from the budget committee, designate a second. No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no. Special Revenue Fund One Twenty Seven, amendment number two. Motion, I say, no request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Motion carries sixteen, no. Highway Fund One Thirty-One, amendment number two. No motion, I say, no request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Motion carries. Highway Fund One Thirty-One, amendment number three. From the committee, no, first one, second, needed, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote Passes sixteen, no. Capital Fund One Seventy-One, amendment number one. No motion, second, capital committee, need, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Sixteen, zero. Next item, Nursing Office Capital Fund One Seventy-four, amendment number one.
This is the amendment that just takes in the money on the bond that we issued.
Yes.
I understand what it is. It's already voted, it's just put in the right place.
No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no. Landfield Fund Two Oh Seven, amendment one. All in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no. Landfield Fund Two Oh Seven, amendment number two. No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no. Jefferson County School General Partners Fund One Forty-One, budget amendment number three. No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, zero. Jefferson County Schools, General Partners Fund One Forty-One, budget amendment number No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no. Jefferson County Schools, General Partners Fund One Forty-One, budget amendment number No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, no. Passes sixteen, zero. Jefferson County Schools, Fund One Forty-three, Student Nutrition, Budget Amendment Number No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, zero. Jefferson County School Education Capital Projects Fund, number One Seventy-seven, Budget Amendment One. No request to speak. All in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no. Jefferson County School Education Capital Projects Fund, One Seventy-seven, Budget Amendment Number Two. No request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. They done a pledge another year.
Quick on that, but...
Jay. Thank you. It wouldn't pass without you, but we appreciate your vote.
You gotta watch that one.
Oh, you just say, I'm sure that'll jump over nobody. Nominating Committee, see attachment. I guess Mr. Bales is, uh, representing the nominating committee tonight.
I don't have the main, uh, Mr. Yedder, here you go. On the ad extension, we got the end term for third term. Bill Hiddon, uh, first term with Charlotte Bird, uh, third term. We should take all these together. Out of control, we added Lisa Breen, the chair representative, and Bruce Douglas. And then Board of Health, Regina Fields. And on the Finance Committee, we brought forward Greg Bird, Randy Bales, Katie Huntaker, and Jim Starbuck.
It's cut from committee, does not need a motion, second. Any request to speak? Hear none, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes fourteen, one opposed. Next item. Resolution Twenty-One dash thirty. What's that one say? Library issue, six seventy-one, oh, it's on there, I'm sorry, excuse me, I got... Resolution Twenty-One dash thirty, it's a rezoning of property from A-one to C-two. We held a public hearing in our work session. Motion by Mr. Scarlett, second by Mr. Salma. Seeing no request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes fourteen, one. Next, Resolution Twenty-One dash, uh, need to back up. We have the IBI tenure recreation plan that was presented at work session. We will need to approve that, because that will be our tenure plan, and we'll be getting review of our motion and second request to speak. None, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no.
Question, Mr. Chairman, for some, on that clarification, did that have a fiscal load attached to it, a cost?
No, none.
Okay.
It's just a, uh, recreation plan involved, uh, other municipalities and us, but there's no dollar amount to it, other than what we paid to have it done, which was already approved. That brings us to Twenty-One dash forty-seven, Resolution to adopt a reappointment, redistricting plan for Jefferson County, Tennessee. Mr. Reed chaired that committee, if he'd like to make comment, Mr. Gibson is here, um, Charlie Hurst, just, these people worked diligently on this, so...
First of all, I'd like to thank the redistricting committee, we had a little bit of problem meeting on one occasion, but, uh, it was a lot of hard work that went into it, I appreciate the support. I couldn't ask for any better working relationship than I had with Mr. Gibson and with Ms. Hurst. Uh, they put hours into this, I put at least close between twenty and thirty, and I do wanna clarify a few things. Uh, when we moved the line and you were sent maps, if you still have problems trying to identify exactly what you lost and gained in your district, then, then we will be glad to help you with that. We went through at least five scenarios, the scenario we came up with, uh, was approved by the redistricting committee. One of the requirements we had was any elected official, county commissioner, road commissioner, constable, school board member, we were not going to move them from their district. We achieved that. The only one that we had to work with was the road commissioner, and we just had to find a, a, uh, census block that would enable us to make sure that he remained within that district. And we had one constable who, in the midst of the whole procedure, was moving, and we were able to make sure that he remained within his district. And I wanna compliment Charles and Charlie on the hard work on that, it was eye-opening for me. I wish every commissioner could have spent that twenty or thirty hours, uh, seeing what they did to ensure that the representation, which is based on the population, not on registered voters, uh, made sure that our community, our county, our citizens are represented when it comes time for voting. Now, turn it over to Charles, so he can, uh, get any questions that you may have from the maps that were provided to you. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Gibson on the redistricting? We have a motion and a second cut from committee, any request to speak? Charles, I'm, if you will, just quickly, right before we vote, just kinda summarize over the next hour.
Yeah, well, first I just wanna thank you guys and thank you for the committee, thank you for Marcus Hay, up there as the chairperson, Charlotte G.I.S. from, uh, Appalachian, she's been invaluable. Uh, we did spend quite a bit of time on this, uh, more than I anticipated I would be spending in an advisory role only, because it's your decision, uh, the lines that you're moving, because it involves you moving the lines that you represent, and that means you're gonna lose some people in their district, and that means you're gonna gain some people in their district. But the goal of the whole program is to have equal representation at the local level, at the state level, and the federal level. This is the first part of that, for the local counties in Tennessee, to get that equal representation among all the districts that they have. And then, uh, we're gonna drop a state, then after the year's over and we get these lines moved, which, uh, we've basically got about eighty-five different roads within the county that this affects to some degree. It may be a mile of one road, it may be a whole road, so there's gonna be some changes. And my understanding is some of the commissioners have already gotten calls about people that might not be in their district anymore, and that they, uh, you know, they're upset because they might have to change a poll in place, well, you know, that's part of it. Uh, in order to get equal representation, that's, that's what you have to do. The, the biggest thing that I think was the thing that the committee, uh, gained or, or did was try to move the least amount of people we could move. I think of it strictly from the election issue, and the, the goal, it's a population issue, and I get the two sometimes confused, because I'm doing elections all the time, but, you know, twenty-four hundred and ten people is basically where we came out of this thing, moving people in the county. Of that, about sixty percent of our population is registered, so we're just, for, for numbers, you're gonna look at fifteen hundred or so people that it's gonna affect on the election side. So you may hear from some of those people, but the committee did what I think they needed to do, and the beauty of it was we didn't have to displace anyone, because obviously if we did, you would be voting on potentially displacing yourself out of your district. So that was a, that was the thing. Now, the, the thing that you're actually approving though, is you're approving the county commission districts, the constable districts, the school board districts, and the road commission districts. They're all part of this, it's not just your district offices, it's all of those offices, and that's what it needs to make sure is in the minutes that it's done that. So I can turn that over to the comptroller's office. We meet Wednesday at the Election Commission, provided this is approved today, and then we will pick those, what we call voting tabulation districts, or pre-seeds, for those Wednesday morning at ten o'clock at the Election Commission office, so we're, we've got that scheduled based on this, but I appreciate it.
Mr. Salma, you have it?
No.
Okay. Oh, you know, you know it's early vote, and you don't have, and you're polling places, you don't change it, you're early vote.
And one of the things, remember about early voting, and, and, you know, we did this, uh, just before we ended, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the things about early voting is that, uh, we've always done in the past is use, new market is early vote facility on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, use White Pine EMS on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, and then use our office, the main office, every day during that. Well, in this last election, because of the crap that went on with COVID and the stuff we had to go through, no pun intended, but I mean, it was, it was, it was a tough election, I will tell you. But we got it done, but we did leave all of those facilities open all the time, every day during, uh, during early voting. And the Election Commission has chosen to continue that, so we will still not be on, we won't be on staggered schedule during early voting in any future elections at this point, all early voting facilities, all three will be open Monday, Thursday, Saturday during early vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Fifteen yes and one no, it passes. That brings us to, uh, library board recommendations, and this comes directly from the library board, and it's, uh, in case you don't have it in front of you, it's Melissa Hensley to fill the unexpired term of Joe Maljuri, and this will be her first term, Gabriel Pettit to fill the unexpired term of Marilyn Bar, the Jefferson representative, and Lynn McColl to fill the unexpired term of Tracy Cable. This comes from the library board, as recommendation to county commission, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no request to speak, all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen, no. That brings us to Resolution Twenty-One Forty-One, U.S. Census Housing Unit Density Threshold. Let me just say quickly, this comes from Lanco, uh, they're, they're changing, I might get it backwards, they're changing, the Lanco area is based upon density or population, so it's kind of a change, and they, they're, they're just saying this resolution to back Lakeway area, our planning area that Jefferson City, White Pine and others were in, and Mayor Taylor is back here. This is saying just, uh, the census... This is saying, just, the Census paper and the paper said, just leave it alone, is what the resolution. Motion and a second, no request to speak, all in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Passes sixteen oh. Resolution twenty-one dash forty-four, a resolution requesting general assembly of the state of Tennessee enact legislation to provide local communities with the option of electing school directors. We have a motion by Mr. Blad, and second by Mr. Bird, Mr. Scarlett requests to speak.
Yes, sir. I know this sounds like a good idea on the surface. And myself, and Mr. Pettit, both have served on the school board. And for me, I was dead in this county before I served on the school board. I was all, I thought it all had been elected, no question in my mind. After being on the school board, though, this thing, appointing the school thing, the school director, does not cut anybody out of county, they can apply for it. They can go through the process, whatever. But I think it gives you a larger pool of applicants, it gives you a lot, we're talking about seventy-plus million dollars of our budget. And if you're going to hire somebody, I want the very best person that they can get. And I don't discount this, there are plenty of people here in the county that can do it. But I would rather not see them have divided interest, whereas you have the school board and the superintendent are at odds. And something can't be done, because if we go back to elected superintendents, and this county has had to do it, they've had to let a superintendent go. If it's an elected superintendent, you've got up to the next election. So, and it also creates some issues of different things. So I, I think we all have to be very careful when we think about this. And I'd like to say, I was firmly in this county before I served on the school board, but I am not, man.
Thank you, Ms. Huthbaker.
I do not support election of superintendents, but I do support our current process of appointing the director of schools. Education Reform Act nineteen ninety-two resulted in Tennessee facing an election of superintendents and it plays a system in which all superintendents are appointed, followed by elected school boards. And it was based on three principles. Superintendent should focus on serving students and not campaigning. Appointments of superintendents is the best practice, and elected school boards hold superintendent accountable, like John Nelson said, they can remove the superintendent if they need to during their contract time. Directors of schools have a broad skill set and must stay focused on student outcome every day. Campaigning for an elected position takes calm away from their important responsibility and may lead to unnecessary political pressure on educators. Simply put, electing superintendent saw tracks the individual from his or her responsibilities and leading the district and focusing on students, thus creating a lack of leadership. Over ninety-nine percent of the school districts in the nation appoint superintendents, which overwhelmingly shows this is the best practice for Tennessee and across the nation. So today, only two states allow election of superintendents, and that's Alabama and Florida. And in those two states, only sixty-three of the two hundred and forty districts have elected superintendents. The majority still appoint. And most districts that do elect, typically they're the four districts with the larger free and reduced lunch population. Alabama was forty-fifth out of fifty in the states is where they rank, and I don't want to be at the bottom of all the same states in the rankings. In Jefferson County, we have seven elected school board members. The citizens who reside within the boundaries of the school district elect school board members for a four-year term. Every two years, part of the school board is elected. School board appoints a superintendent and makes policy. The superintendent leads and manages the district. Our school system has been fiscally responsible. For the last six years, the school system has submitted balanced budgets, and the school fund balance has grown. Our school system has improved academically. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the Tennessee Department of Education Tennessee Accountability Data scored Jefferson County the following. Level five, which is the highest possible score, level five in composite literacy and numeracy, level five in all twenty-four areas of accountability. Nine schools were level five, two schools identified as reward schools, that was Hobbit and Dandridge. Advancing district designation, top ten percent among all districts in Tennessee, and we were the fourth highest performing district in the state of Tennessee. And this was all achieved during one of the most challenging times. I think the current system of appointing a superintendent has been great for our school system, and I do not support the idea of making it an elected position. And I'd also like to say thank you to the school superintendent, the teachers, the support staff, the students, and parents for all of their hard work and academic achievements.
Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Mr. Scarlett and Ms. Huthbaker for their point of view and information that they provided, which is very robust set of points and arguments. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Reed for the resolution that he proposed. Again, it contains a robust set of points and arguments. But I would suggest this debate is given the card before the course. At this point, it's not a matter of whether, for me anyway, whether I support an appointed director of schools or elected superintendents, it's whether I support the proposition that citizens are to have the right to choose. And that I believe they have the wisdom to do so. So I would support this resolution. Even though it's written in the form of being in support of elected school superintendents, it does not have that effect at this point. It only allows for the people to choose which approach is taken in their county. Thank you.
Mr. Reed.
I'd just like to make a few points. When we say that appointed school directors will do a better job, I, I have a problem digesting that, simply because I look at the other elected officials within this county. I look at our sheriff, we probably got the finest sheriff in the state. I look at our property assessor, I look at our circuit court clerk, I mean, I can go down the list of the department heads, and I see where they are responsible to the citizens of this county for doing their job, and we're blessed because they do an excellent job. I can remember the first time I ever got to vote, I was so excited about it, but I happened to be overseas in a faraway land when I was about eighteen years old. Voting is something important, and we should be able to trust our citizens with the ability to vote an elected official in as our school superintendent. They can be connected to the parents and voters, especially through campaigning, but I don't see the circuit court clerk going around all the time having to campaign to keep his job. I see him doing an excellent job. So I think that's kind of a moot point, it really doesn't work. You don't have to have an appointed superintendent. School directors be an independent voice, the ability to express ideas and policies independent of the school board. Appointed directors cannot do this, I look and I see it. Special interests prefer the administrative state to elected office holders, and elected office holders should be important to every one of you citizens sitting in this county. And yes, if I don't do my job, you can vote me out of office. Appointed school directors concentrate political power to a small number of people. It only takes four people in this county to control roughly half of our budget, of our budget overall. Another false narrative that is advanced by detractors of elected school directors is that the one about time spent working instead of campaigning. Elected officials can do a good job with their duties while campaigning, I've said that. The biggest and most important point to make, this proposed legislation is going to the state to ask. It's not a mandate, it's going to be up to the state legislature to allow us to do this or not. But this gives our local voters a choice of having elected school directors. Shouldn't our citizens have that final decision? Thank you.
Request to speak? Seeing none. All in favor of resolution twenty-one dash forty-four, vote yes, opposed vote no. Has to have eleven votes pass. Resolution passed. Next item. Resolution twenty-two-one dash forty-six. A resolution by Jefferson County to better manage residential growth and preserve our county's beauty and well-being. A motion by Ms. Huthbaker, second by Sam Solomon. Request to speak? Seeing none. All in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Pass thirteen to two. Announcements real quick. First of all, thank you everyone for being here, I can't miss, I know you don't hear it, but you got a beer board meeting right after this. Announcements.
Yeah, I'd just like to feel, Mr. Prower and Mr. Phil's please correct, it's my name, and Prower's tackle, and they call first responders. When you serve, I told the board, is that correct?
That's correct, I should have given that to my folks, I will be here during the work sessions, all up and served.
So I want to, real quickly, our tourism director, Lauren Hurd, I think has some type of beef coming up in the very near future. She probably want to advertise, and she may have somebody to introduce to me.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, this weekend we will have our second Hyatt Blue Festival, we're really, really excited to have this event. I'm excited because it doesn't have to do with fish. Anyway, we're super, super excited on this, I've been in contact with a lot of our local hoteliers. We do have a reunion, actually have a fishing tournament this weekend as well, but those two together, several of our hotels are full. So I think this will be a really bang-up job, we finish out our huge season for our hotel. Do you want to introduce someone I'm really super excited to have on board? This is Sarah Mills, she is my new assistant, we're going to call her our marketing manager, she has.
We can say her.
Yeah, we can say her. So we're super excited to grow the tourism department, and I think that we have a lot of good things coming our way. Very excited, thank you.
Thank you. I would also, I would be remiss, Amory Fox, the chair of the school board. Thank you for being here, you always recognize me at the school board meetings, so I'm returning the favor. Fred Taylor, the mayor of White Pine, is with us tonight, thank you, Fred. I, you don't give enough at the town meetings, you just come here, so we can hook you up here. And I'm going to do a personal thing I don't normally do, but my wife is here. She never comes, so she doesn't see how hard I work. And I just, I just need to publicly say I thank her for her support. So, with that being said, we will adjourn for a beer board meeting, we are adjourned.